Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ron Smith. This is the second, the funny thing is Renee's up in Burlington and I just left there. So our paths were off. But yeah, I'm here to present the June 30, 16, the second year we've done you guys. Just to go over the highlights of it. You've got our highest audit opinion that we can issue, an unmodified opinion. The financial state of the school district is you're financially healthy. At the end of June 30, 16, you guys had about $140,000 of carryover balance, of which you used about $340,000 for tax relief for this budget year that's about to end in 2017. Which leaves you with unassigned, you know, for future purposes, about, it was about $200,000 for June 30, 2016. In addition to that, you've got about $115,000 sitting in a bus replacement reserve account. And I believe another $180,000 sitting in a major repair reserve account as well. So I think you guys are financially healthy, you know, here at the, at the school district. One of the things that we worked with at the superintendents this year, not just for your school district, for all of them, we continue to work on, and we're actually coming back the first week of June, is student accounts. We want to see some better practices. And I'm not saying that it was at panel, and Renee has a list of all the things that we had brought up in our talking points this past audit, but that's one of the areas of improvement that we need supervisor union wide with all the school districts, is, you know, better practices with some of the student accounts. So, but financially, you guys are solid, rock solid, so. That's, that's about the highlights.
That's the highlight. Hey, does anyone have any questions?
No.
No.
Second.
All right, these motions that made second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Under public comments, Cindy, if we can maybe bring Kevin up from facilities? Or if this'll go kind of quickly, it'll be okay either way.
So, we have him down there?
I think it might go.
Yeah. All right, we have, under action items, we have financial, the treasures report for I don't know if it was posted or not. I think her dad was sick and she didn't get to, there was nothing major on it. So we will probably get two of them next month. I didn't see it, did you?
No.
No, okay. So we'll look for that in June. I'll make sure, because Mary Lee did call me and tell me about it. All right, now we have the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion to main second, is there any questions on the consent agenda?
Nope.
None? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Signify by hand. Okay, all in favor, okay, very good. Policies, we have one, 5411, comprehensive HIV and bloodborne pathogens. This one is to warn. Second, motion been made in second, is there any comments on policy 5411? Seeing none, all those in favor of warning it? Signify by raising a hand. It's unanimous.
Just a question, does this replace, because we've already had these before, does this replace one?
Usually updates.
It's usually, yeah, updates.
Just an update?
Yes, they've been looking at them, right Jim?
Yep, they, they review them on a cycle.
Cycle, yeah.
Yeah.
And they just, yeah, because there's a lot of them that probably need to be recycled back and forth. All right, that brings us down to facilities update. And that would be Sir Kevin.
Good evening, how are you doing?
Good, you?
Good, I think.
Haven't had a phone call lately.
That's right, that's good, huh?
Which is good.
Thank you. There's been a whole, a lot of bad stuff this year, so.
Well, that's good.
It's a good thing.
Thank you.
Somebody's got to shoot here.
Yeah, I'll take two, I'll keep one of the teams.
Short one, no.
Oh, yeah.
But I got another one in the folder, so I'll just.
That's all right, I'll give her mine, it's fine.
Um, so the first thing is the windows from last year's project that we're finishing this year. You know how we split that into two?
Yes.
Last year.
Yeah.
So that's the top item on this, of what the balance is going to be to finish the windows.
And then it will be done.
Yes.
The whole.
Yep, yep, that'll be, that'll be everything. There's two classrooms left and one window in the boiler room. And that's the ones he's going to do, yes.
This is the third year, third day I've done it, just one more.
That's it, last year we had four rooms left and the nurses and that, we'd, right.
Then they should be good for 20 years, right?
They should be.
I don't care.
Hopefully I'll be retired then, so, who knows? So, I just had him give me a, an update, he just called me yesterday. The final figure for this year will be 22,300. Okay, the original, which is right in with what, what he said, the original, uh, price last year when we put it out for bid was $46,550. They did $24,806 last year. He said that by splitting it into two years, because he, the way the windows are going to be, it could be up to $1,000 difference, but it actually is $556 difference, so he kept it right there, just as close as he could. So that's the, one of the big items. And then, the heating, Alliance Mechanical didn't, we had it in there, we got approved to do $5,800 worth of work in the ceiling down in the primary wing. They didn't get that done. And part of it was because of parts, then getting the okay, they needed the okay by, they said if they had it by the middle of August. And they got it, but they didn't get it done before school started. Then they didn't get in here over vacation to get it done.
What was it again?
Some stuff for the controls up in the ceiling for the heating system and Alliance, that's not something that our regular plumber can do, it's something that, you know, we have the contract with Alliance. So anyways, long story short, they didn't get that done, but they do have all, they finally have all the parts, they do still want to do it, we still need to have it done. And, so that, that was left over from last year. Okay? Yes, yep. And then, classroom heaters. We've got a couple that this year towards the end of the winter have not worked properly. I've got to go in the computer every morning, manually turn them on or off. So I, I put in there a couple thousand dollars to have our plumber come over the summer and take care of those. And I think, I talked to him and I think that'll, that will take care of it, about that amount. And some actuators that go in all the rooms in the heater systems. They actually are what turn on and off the valve for when you need heat and don't through the computer system. Rich had about six of those downstairs in stock because they were hard to get. And I've used about five of those this year during the seat, during the year changing because they weren't operating properly. I found a place, they're a couple hundred bucks, I found a place out of Pennsylvania for $114 apiece, and I would like to order like, I told them eight, but I mean if we order six or eight, eight of them's $912. So we have them, I want to change four or five more over the summer. And then we have a couple in case we have a problem during the winter. Our plumber suggested, we've had this ongoing problem with the older boiler. It just doesn't, the initial ignite, it won't ignite once you hit it, seems to run good for a while. He came, Sam actually had Doug Davidson come and look at it. And he believes that the little computer control box in is bad. He's done a couple of little things and all that, and it's not a whole lot of, into the system that can, that goes bad. So he feels pretty strongly that it's that. He told me those boxes are generally around 15 to 1800. He can get them refurbished for about half of that price. And so he said you're probably looking at about 12 to 1500 to replace that with a refurbished one, but he said he's had very good luck with.
Would that make the boiler work better?
Yes, that would make it, so that, don't have to go in and hit the reset when we need that extra boiler. You know, a lot of times you just use the one, but.
These parts that you're talking about replacing, every time we commute here, this place is boiling hot.
Well.
Is that going to alleviate that?
Well, there's absolutely no boiler on whatsoever in the building right now, so there's no heat turned on in the building. But you've, I said this before, you've got, if you go down in the primary wing, it's eight to 10 degrees difference. You've got a white roof there and you've got a black roof out here. And I, and I was talking to.
Do you need a water?
Well, they do make a thing to do that. It's, it's fairly expensive, but not, nothing as opposed to what a new roof is, because this is the newest roof on the building.
Yes.
In the, one of the control guys was saying that a lot of places that have that will paint like 10 feet around their air, you know, units upstairs and their air condition just so that heat don't drive there. And I don't have it with me, but he gave me, he said you buy it in like five gallon pails. And it's fairly expensive, but like I say, it's, it might be an inexpensive way of, still not going to be like it's air conditioned in here, but you're not, you know, tomorrow morning with this 90 degrees, tomorrow morning it'll be, because that thing has just drawn that heat all day long and right through, it'll probably seven o'clock tonight, it'll be really hot in here. I usually open up the doors, turn the fan on until the kids start coming, then try to get some cool air in here. But I can look into that if you want me to, to see what, putting that coating on, at least around the units, you know. Right, you know, and we can find out. And I did get a price on a new boiler, because we had talked, talked about at least finding out how much one was, so that you find out what's going to happen with the buses and that, that sinking fund for the buses. And I was talking to Sam Kelson. He said, he kind of put everything together that he could, said you're probably roughly around $45,000 without getting right, you know, he could get a final one if we got, where we decided we were going to do it. And he said he included about $4,000 in there for an engineer, because he said you're probably going to have to have an engineer if you're going to put a new system in there. His, his thing was you really, and he said if you're going to, if it's going to go out to bid, you're really going to need an engineer, so everybody's comparing apples to apples. So he, he added that in there just so we would have an idea. You know, probably not because of the age, the boiler's not in horrible shape. I mean, as far as Sam said a while back, he put a new fire chamber in it. But I got an idea with the, huh? Weight wise, well, right now cars are doing about $150, where about two and a half years ago they were doing 400. So I mean, it, it's way down. If it comes back up, you might have, you know, you might have 100 or so in weight on that. And it's just got to go down to Tam, because he takes it now down here, you don't have to drag it anywhere, but it's not a great value, but there's, there'll be. Yes, right, exactly, probably, yeah. And then with the windows, we'll have to have Catamount Environmental come and take those windows out like we got, had to do last year because of the asbestos in the, in the caulking. And I called him, and he said it last year was $4,000. It's a couple less windows, so he said it won't exceed that, it might be just a little bit under that, but he said it won't be, it won't exceed that, so they'll take them away. They have to, they have to wrap them up. Alls you've got is a little bit around the things, and they got to wrap them up and the whole nine yards. But they checked them last year and they, they did have it in it, and they had to take those out, and they'll have to take these out. And then for our strobe lights that we put up, I thought it might be a good idea to put some signs under them that say if lights are flashing, do not enter building. And it's not a lot of money. I was looking through the book the other day, and it's probably roughly around 250, $300 for the five or six signs that, that we have. Well, I saw them hanging out yelling to some. And then the bathrooms, the girls and the boys up, up here and the girls downstairs, they all need some different attention as far as some parts and hardware. But the, the girls' room downstairs really could use some doors, they're getting bat and flimsy.
Is that a door?
Yeah, for a long time. I could install the stuff, it's not like we got to have somebody come and do it, but I allotted a couple thousand dollars for petitions and stuff for that, and thought we should try to do some of that this summer. Even if we don't do all four of them, if we do two of them this summer, and then the hardware that the others need. And then maybe next year do the, the balance of them so that they're a little, little nicer.
This new boiler, say we go with a new boiler. How does it work if we want to try central air?
I don't know if it really would have anything to do with, because air, if it was a hot air system and not a boiler system, then it would be in conjunction. But because it's a boiler system with water, I don't think it'll do anything as far as, like, I don't think there's anything they could add to save us money.
If you have a hot air system with the ductwork already in, it's blowing out hot air.
Right, then, then it's, your air conditioning can win pretty easy. But we're a hot water system.
I know.
I'm trying.
I'm trying.
Cool this place down.
Yeah, and air conditioning really is the only thing that's going to really do it. Like I say, there's nothing, other than the, the hot water tanks for domestic hot water, there's no, you know, boilers aren't even running.
Kevin, what about resealing anything from parking lot or anything this year?
I don't think we did it last year, so I don't think we need to do any of that this year.
Any painting or?
I think what little bit might need to be done, I bought one of those handhelds and now that they're all, now that the lines are all there and measured out, if we need to go over them, we could go over them ourselves. I don't think we really need to. The other thing that I got up top here with no price is the cameras. We've been having a lot of trouble with the cameras. Doesn't want to work today, it won't work tomorrow, Judy's kind of looked at them with You go down, right now every one of them might be working, you come in tomorrow morning, two of them might not be. Well, I didn't know how old they were, I knew they were like somewhere around 10 years old, because.
No.
No, well, I've been here three, and Rich had them put in.
I'll bet you they're five years old.
Five years old, okay. Okay, so.
Seems to have. I bet Todd started from there. I had to.
They were in after you, after you were here, okay. But at any rate, I called our alarm guy, and he actually is kind of floating away from the camera system, because he's got, there's so much new technology with the alarms, he's, so he had a guy give me a call who's very good, or seems very good. And came, he came in this morning, and we went around and we looked at everything. And he said if they're, you know, I said, I said I thought they were somewhere around 10. He said if they're seven to 10 years old, he said, the technology is just much more incredible. I mean, we were looking, we have a blind spot and one spot that doesn't catch what we, you know, sometimes have needed to see. Well, that's, we thought of that, okay? But he wanted, after looking at and showing him what we could see on our cameras, he, you know, he said with this new technology and new cameras, you can read a license plate. You know, on something as opposed to wondering. We have 12 cameras. So what he's going to do anyways is put a price together of what it would cost to update everything to state of the art, and then we can figure out what we want to do with that. We can't just add one camera right now, because we have our receiver in there, only holds 12, and we've got 12 cameras up. So my original, the reason I originally caused was, called was to see if we could update to like a 16 camera and add a camera. He says, you really, it's not going to be compatible, the new with the old. Right. So he said, let me at least get you a quote together, show it to the board. And he said there's two ways, one is you can pay for it, or two, you can lease to buy. It's a monthly thing. He said it's not a lot of difference in the price. And then at the end of the lease, which he's going to send me all that information of how long, how many years that, how long that would be, you buy the thing for a dollar.
So you have problems?
Yeah, they just often don't, they're very fuzzy, sometimes they're not working at all, and that's why I didn't know if it was just this receiver and a change in that would.
Other problems?
No, you, I mean, you know, last year we, we had a section out there where we had a burnout and stuff that we couldn't, it's not like a horrible, it's not something that's top priority, but it's something that probably we should just be looking into to see what is.
Is it possible maybe with some of the newer technology that they might have a wider field of view?
Yes.
You know, so maybe we wouldn't have to put in as many cameras or.
And that's what he said, he said.
Upgrade to a 16 camera system.
You know, they got the round ones out here now that get a, not a very wide view, and he said the new ones are not even around, they're the newer style camera, and they get over 180 degree. And that was the other thing that he said that was, would be very helpful, because you're going to get over twice the coverage with the amount, with the cameras that you, the amount of cameras that you have now, he said, because like now, if you go in certain parts, it covers the pathway which is closest to the building, which you'd want to see where it'll cover 180 degrees or so with the newer style.
You said you used to go in that hall?
Yes, that first year I was here, they put one in that hall the first summer I was here. And that was the 12th camera that filled that.
All of them run off of that one?
Yes. That filled that.
The receiver is banned?
Huh? Well, that was my original thing, is that if we updated that, but he says.
Throw these cameras out.
He says updating that, you're not going to get, you know, you might not, he said, you might not have like the fuzziness or whatever, but he said your camera, you're not going to see things any better than, than what you see in whether you update that or not, because they're just a whole, you know. But I will, I will call him too tomorrow and tell him that that system is a little newer than I thought, and see if that, what that. But he said they don't, you know, they don't even use that type of camera anymore. They use more of a, but he said it covers a whole bigger area.
Sorry, you want the lock?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And it's like a computer, you buy a new computer.
Yep.
It's almost obsolete when you buy it, you know, you, but, so that's what he said. And the only other question I had, we need some gravel out here in this parking lot. And I was talking to Joel and wondered if the town could do it, rather than pay somebody, at least it's all the same taxpayers? Yes. And there's some big, some pretty big whoopee doos. Where the, in this side of the bus too, not just, it's not just from the bus being parked there, it's, it was there and it's just growing bigger, and there's two or three others in that dirty area.
Where's these two buses up? Sometimes Mr. Kirk drives.
But it's, it's not created from that, it just is, it's getting bigger and, and bigger. But Joel said he would be more than happy to put some fill in there and grade it, but that we'd have to okay it with the town board. So I don't know if you can ask Nelson to ask the board if they could. I just, I'm just thinking rather than pay somebody else, at least it's all our same tax dollar.
Yeah.
You know, and it might be cheaper if the, you know what I mean, maybe they'll charge us something, but not, not what somebody's going to come in and.
Get it on bill.
How much are you talking, roughly?
How much to?
How much gravel?
Um.
Roughly?
I, I would say maybe three, four yards of gravel, and I'm not, I'm not real good at figuring that, but there's a couple big, big holes. It might not even be that much, but somewhere I would think in that area. And that's pretty much it. Our generator, that was the only other thing. Now, our generator, they came yesterday and today, the motor's in, they were going to run it late this afternoon, that all went well. Now, as far as the insurance, the estimate on the generator was $13,723. We have $2,500 deductible. They depreciated it by $3,430. The insurance is paying 7, 7792.45. That leaves us with $5,930. And it's my understanding that the town, so that would be 29.65 for each of us.
You would just have to get the secretary.
Okay.
Yeah, get her a copy of it.
Okay.
She'll present it to the board. If they had the front, they'd manipulate this back.
They, okay.
Listen, that, that's a brand new motor?
It's a brand new motor.
And how long is it doing?
It's probably got a year warranty on it. I'll make sure. Well, you know, this motor, actually, I know, well, it was a bad motor right from the start, my understanding. And then, but this motor has been a very good motor, it's been fine. I was talking to the guy that was doing it, and he changed the last one. And he said that it was the, the original motor from, brand new from the factory, the seats weren't in properly in the head, and it was using oil, it was using like a quart and a half of oil, yeah. And, but this one has been fine, but it had, that line got chewed through.
Is there a limo?
It's a Ford motor. [laughing]. You know, so.
Off all the summer?
But, but that's what happened, is that, you know, the line got chewed through and.
Was it a braided line?
He did a, with that line that was there, he did away with, okay? Because that used to come out to the side so that you could change the oil. There's enough room under there to change the oil by just sliding a pan under. So he did away with that, and that line is no longer. I had a lengthy conversation with him today about braided lines. His, he's saying that they've never had a problem, but to do the braided lines, part of it is almost impossible, because the braided lines are like a screw on, and most of these are slide on. And he said, and I, because I said, you know, on, on the race cars and stuff, they always use braided lines. But he's saying he don't know if they can physically use a braided line because of that, and that they keep a close eye on it, and if there was an issue. But I said, I, I just don't want to have another issue, I said, you know. Well, there is one in there, because when I came up when the alarm was going, it said low oil pressure. But the problem is, it's just like cars at the, you know, at the garage, the light comes on, it's too late. It's, you know what I mean? And that's what happened with this, we went out and it wasn't running. I mean, it was Tuesday morning where it does its test. The alarm went off here, it went out and it wasn't running, but it already ran for a couple minutes, the pressure was low and it shut off, but it, it broke rod, you know. I mean, there was, when they pulled it out, pulled the radiator out, there was very little antifreeze in it, because when they got into the oil pan again, it was all in there. So it, it broke the block and probably broke a rod, because he said we could, it locked right up, when they came originally, we found the oil leak, they put the line on, filled it with oil, and then started it, and it wrapped and quit, and locked right up. He said we can turn it, we can turn it like a half turn one way and back the other way, so there's probably a rod flopping in there that's doing it. And the problem is, is it's got the low, you know, it does have the low oil pressure cutoff, but it cuts out, they cut off too late. They're like, I don't even know why they design them the way they do, but I've seen it in the garage over the years several times, where oil light will come on and the damage is done. The damage is done.
Well, minus boiler, we're talking about $38,000.
Right, and if you take, part of that was from last year.
Yes.
Like if you take the 2200, 22,300 for the windows that was last year, it brings it down to 16.
I don't know why, I, I thought we had paid for the whole window to last year.
No.
No. No, we split it two, we put the money in the budget.
We did put the money in the budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that brings it down to like 16. And then the, the Alliance one for 5,800 was included last year in the budget, and that brings it down to like 10,000.
So you're, you're going to come back and change the price on the damage?
Yep, I could, yeah, I can do that, and then we can decide, and I'll know.
We're really, the bus issue is going to be brought up. And 10 to 1, we're, we probably will be selling two or three of them. So then we can just, this is good to know.
Mm-hmm.
But this, this year we'll probably okay it like June, is that too late?
No, shouldn't be.
No.
Shouldn't be. You mean as far as the?
Everything that.
Everything?
Yes.
Okay. Um, no, we know we're all set with the windows though, right? Because I told them, go ahead, they're, they're ordered or being ordered as we.
That was a goal last year.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, what's the pleasure? I kind of want to get a step ahead of myself. Do you want to okay this tonight and hold the boiler?
Well, we'll okay it tonight.
Yeah, I mean, June's only, only month away.
Yeah. And then just hold the boiler?
Yeah, and the thing is, you can get started with it, you know, cause you get the approval.
And just hold on the boiler, I mean, I just wanted to give you an idea.
Yeah, yeah, we wanted a price on it.
If we decide to go on the boiler at some point, we'll get some more exact. But that's, it's gonna be right in that area. And the other thing is, is if we decide to go ahead with the boiler, we don't need to spend this fifteen hundred on the old one. If we decide we're gonna hold off for a couple of years or whatever, then we do, we need to spend this and at least have that working for that, you know. Right, right. If we, if, if we, you know, decide in June or whatever that, yeah, we wanna get a new boiler, then we, we won't do this. Um, because he, now that the boilers are off, he can do this anytime before next winter, you know what I mean? We can even, you know, get into when school starts because it's warm when it starts. But, but there's no sense in spending that money if we're gonna do the, do a new boiler. But if we're not gonna, it's gonna be another... Yeah, okay, that's fine, that's fine. You know, and like I say, even if it's not June, if, you know, because this is something that... Right. But this is something that can be done anytime before, you know what I mean? I mean, not like November, but, you know, he, it's not like a huge thing. Probably has to order, you know, order it and probably takes a week or two to get and, and put it in. It's not a, not a, it's a pretty simple job to change. So it's not something like, we gotta get this ordered and get it here in time. So, so that can hold off for a little bit till we decide for sure what we wanna do with it. We're gonna be all brand new here. We, we had the two first.
Yep.
Okay? And one had already been placed a couple of years before I got here. So that left one that we thought would get us through till the new fiscal year, but it didn't. It, it didn't burst, but it started leaking. So we bypassed it and the new tank is ordered. I think it's here, um, and I think probably Sam will be putting that one in probably within the next week. So then, well, no, the one that was just replaced before I started is still there. That's about what I'm kinda counting as a new one, but all these are less than ten years old. And the, well, according to the plumber, these have more galvanized in them and are supposed to last longer. The problem is, like we talked about a plastic or fiberglass tank, but the pressure, they won't take the pressure is, um, what he said. They were put in, they weren't originally here. They were put in within the last, they, we never had them. Right, the state wanted more retention time, so we had to have those, I think they're three hundred and fifty or eighty gallon tanks and we had, they had to have four of them put in. And so that, so that might be because they were never, I mean, they were just put in new within, because it was something they never had, they just had the pressure tanks over on the far side. Yeah, yeah, they wanted, because they needed more retention time for the Florida system.
Motion, ten what, ten grand?
I, I don't know if it was exactly that, but...
It's minus, like I say, minus the boiler, minus the money for the windows because we already, and minus the, uh, alliance because that was approved before. It's like, it's right around ten seven.
I was gonna say, why don't we go a little higher, not to exceed, say eleven or twelve, just in case?
Not nearly as bad as last year when I was here.
No, I know. All right, all right, you're saying eleven?
Second.
Motion been made second it. Is there any other discussion on the budget proposals? If not, all those in favor, all right, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you again in June.
Okay. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
That's a lot, that's good. We're getting caught right up. All right. Well, I don't see a gentleman pertaining to the ball field. So we're gonna go to the superintendent's report.
And that was a leftover from last month too, right?
Yeah, he came, when we were walking out the door. He thought it was the wrong time, so I told him to come back in June.
June, so he won't be here till next month?
I mean, May, sorry. But I did research the deed, I got a copy of the deed, there's no restrictions on it. The only thing, the board had said that, he did tell me that he was applying for a five oh four, some kind of a...
Five oh four, three C corporations, a nonprofit corporation.
So, um, if it's something that, um, that we can, you know...
That is some entity is gonna have to own it, like, right, so take the deed.
Yeah, you're not gonna give it to, at first, you're gonna give it to...
To the organization, yes, yeah. But with the stipulation that if, uh, if they ever decide not to use it, it, it has to remain a recreation for the children. So we wanna make sure we, we, we can get out to that. Cause I spoke to Renee and told her, you'd have to go through her anyways. Okay.
Again, I, I just wanna thank you all for coming on, uh, Monday with such short notice and that, um, that's our, it was short notice. We, we were surprised by the attendance that we had from everybody and appreciate those that, that could make it. We weren't expecting that we'd see everyone. What I can report to you tonight though is, uh, I don't have any status. Just, I've spoken to Kai Morrison, Brian Campion both today. And, um, it doesn't appear that the House is going, that, there's the votes in the House for, uh, this, the bill that the Senate passed. They've brought a number of proposals to the governor, they're still in pass. They're, one way or the other, they said, they had both said to me that they will send a budget to, uh, to the governor no later than Friday and what he will do with it, uh, nobody knows. So we're still in that same limbo that we were, so. But we'll keep, we'll keep monitoring because it, it can impact us. Especially in some of our districts that we're gonna take an even bigger cut on that. And really that's, so that's what I've been working on. I just, that and, um, we did begin interviews today for the replacement of Mary Lee. Uh, we did four today, we have three tomorrow. That's a big monumental change coming. And I did, uh, I attended along with you the retirement dinner last night. That was a nice event at the middle school. And, um, we did debrief today with the, the HR department has taken over running that and, uh, as a function, and so we had a debrief meeting today about, um...
The future.
Some suggestions on how that could become a, a better event. And it was very nice, but it was...
It used to be...
I heard rave reviews about the food.
Yeah, it was, but the attendance was, I think, when we have six tables, you know, so...
But this is probably the fifth or sixth and I've been to every one of them and the tables always were full.
Yeah, those were small. So I was very surprised when I walked in there.
Back when I was chair of the SU, we made this suggestion and it really went forward to do something for the retirees to say, after all the years that they've worked, even if they've only worked five years, just, just to say thank you. And they always were very happy, you know.
Well, I think those that attended were very happy and it was a, a very nice event. Um, I just would've liked to see better attendance, so...
Me too.
So we, um, we did a whole list of items of what we thought were lacking last night. So it's, we'll keep an ongoing file on that and...
Yeah, we can improve it.
Yeah, that's the idea, so...
Now, um, I didn't get a chance to get ahold of Lori Linger. I didn't know if you talked to her and asked her if she wanted to still be...
Yeah, she does.
She does? Okay, so she, she will be our community...
Maybe you should, well, then we are gonna want a meeting for next Tuesday night, uh, seven o'clock after the...
Oh, I was gonna say ESP.
Cause we have this ESP negotiation, so we're gonna do it after that.
Oh, where?
Uh, CDC Assembly Room.
Same, same, where we, we'll be...
And all we really anticipate doing that night is doing a work calendar and, and, and a work plan for what, what's gonna happen there, yeah. Set out the calendar, working back from a time when we need to have something accomplished.
Very good, all right. That's the twenty-third?
Yep.
Very good, thank you. Okay, moving right along, oh, we talked to the principal.
Yeah. So did I just hear you say even after five years, we get a little something? This is my fifth year.
Well, that don't mean either.
I was just trying to tell you something, right? Um, so just wanted to... Just wanted to update the board on a few things. Um, we're in the middle of S-Back testing, which is the smarter balance, um, testing for our third through sixth grade students in ELA and math. And then MAPS, the measures of academic progress for second graders through sixth grade. So May is kind of a, a really busy testing month. And then next month in June, we have all the end of the year fun activities, fun field trips, our field day, the all-school barbecue. So those, um, good things will be coming up.
The last, last year the board, we did ice cream.
You served ice cream?
What, what is the year, what's, what is it this year?
Uh, Friday, June sixteenth, we have field day in the morning and then the all-school barbecue. Um, and then we'll be planning for summer school. Um, Don Campbell will be our coordinator. Becky GiJanto no longer wanted to have that other commitment. She's a little bit busy, so Don Campbell will be doing that for us. Next Thursday, May twenty-fifth at two o'clock. Each year, the American Legion sponsors our poppy poster contest. So the ladies picked up their posters today, so next Thursday at two o'clock, they'll be here. We gather around the flagpole out here at the front of the school and, um, classes do some singing and, um, students write poems and they read about what Memorial Day means. So that'll be next Thursday. And then we're planning our, um, off-campus relocation drill. I just talked to Jason Olansky and the, um, state troopers out of Shaftesbury. So that's stage three off-campus relocation, uh, drill to the panel center firehouse. So we cross Route Seven and walk down Center Street. Um, that'll be June eighteenth at, uh, one forty-five. I think that's it. You might, um, go back to Lori Linger. You might wanna make that a vote that you record in your minutes so that she's officially your community member.
Second. Motion been made second it to reappoint Lori Linger as our, uh, community member to Act Forty-six. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Did, uh, and you, I know I mentioned this last month, in June to give out the graduation, at the graduation to hand out the diplomas, is, is there someone that would like to do that? You don't have to, but I usually do it, but I'm gonna be out of town. It's all right, if you don't, if you don't want to, we can just talk Bill Bots, I want to do it. Bill will do it.
There you go.
Okay. Just, just checking guys, just wanted to give you the opportunity.
If I didn't have to stand up there on that stage, I'd do it, but I ain't standing up there on that stage.
Well, I've always been nervous off the stage because somebody gets the podium and the podium, too close to the edge and I'm always afraid I'm gonna go head over heels, but...
We were gonna change it this year and now you're not gonna be here.
I'm not gonna be here, no. Now, the last day of school, what we did last year, John, is the school board bought ice cream from Stewart's and we served ice cream to the kids the last day. They were outside with a picnic anyways and we had our own table. I'm not sure if, I, again, I'm gonna be out of town, I'm not gonna be back on the sixteenth. So, um, I will be here for their meeting on the fifteenth. Is that when the meeting is?
No.
No, it's the twenty-first. I will be back, cause I'm coming back on Tuesday, so I'll be here for June's meeting. So if that's something that you guys, um, would like to do again this year... I don't know if you would or not.
Well, they're doing it for the fair.
Yeah. You wanna ask him? I mean, we, we pay him, I mean, you know, we, we pay him. For ice cream.
I'll ask Anthony, cause he's not always there when I go in.
Yeah, okay. If you could check on it. And I'm sure last year, uh, you came too and so didn't, uh...
Todd did and your wife and Tammy.
So if that's...
And that's the sixteenth Friday, on the last day of school is the twentieth, Tuesday, but that's the sixteen.
Sixteenth, that Friday. So keep that, keep that...
Uh, noon time.
Yeah, noon. Cause the kids eat their lunch and then they line up and they come back class by class and get ice cream. They served them ice cream. And it was a hit. It was something I think is nice, so...
We did.
We did.
Yeah, but what did you, you got that what, two and a half gallon bucket that was deserved?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had an awful lot of ice cream left over last year.
We had a lot left over.
But we gave it to the summer program, right?
Yeah, yeah. Five, they were five gallon, one thing?
I think so, yeah.
They're five gallon.
They're like the big ones that they use down there.
And I think we only bought chocolate and vanilla, that, we didn't get into that, lots of flavors.
Yeah.
We got two flavors, chocolate and vanilla.
Would you serve without it?
They gave us cups to put it in?
Yes.
They gave us cups.
Where did you keep the ice cream to keep it cold?
Uh, the cooler outside. Yep. Uh, Joel actually went with me to pick it, to bring it up and we brought it up just before, I don't know, eleven-thirty, quarter of, and we put it right in the cooler. They have a cooler outside. We just touched base.
But I'll ask Anthony if he brings the wagon.
Okay, that would be great if he...
If he brings the wagon up, does that mean he serves it?
He may let us, I don't know, I'll, I'll talk to him.
Okay. Either way, and if he doesn't like that, then we'll just buy the five gallon one.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, um, so the next meeting will be June twenty-first. We'll put the ball field issue back on. I'll try to get ahold of, uh, Dan, see what's going on. I, I didn't get a chance, there's been too many meetings this week. I'm starting to feel like the superintendent, but, um...
All right, forgetting which meeting you're at, if you are, then you're like me.
I know.
That theme is going around, haven't had a chance, too busy, I know.
Yeah, yes. End of the year. Okay, uh, is there any other questions? June, we, we will be discussing the buses. Oh, I know there was someone who's gonna ask you. Skylar LeBumbard, principal of Sunderland.
Correct.
Before he left, he mentioned something, or after he left, about Sunderland School needing a bus. If it comes down to the fact that we're selling ours, is there any way you can get ahold of him?
I can get ahold of Skylar.
Okay, and let him know that, uh, we're gonna make that decision in June.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can, uh, I have invited Joel to the meeting too, I wanted Joel to be here. So, uh, because it's pertaining to the buses.
Can you get ahold of Grace, Grace Christian, cause they bought a bus the last night.
Who did? Grace Christian? Oh, did they?
They bought one of our buses, I'm sure.
We can have our business office recharge people too.
Yeah, have we get ahold of that?
See who might be.
Because we're keeping two for field trips.
Mm-hmm.
And we have the, the drivers, we have no problem with that, but the others, there's no sense in keeping them because we're, don't think we're gonna be back in the bus business other than field trips. All right. Just FYI, your budget status report is included. The, um, SVSU student enrollment for May, uh, and the computer network and internet acceptable use. What is that? Oh, sixty-one forty-one, that was the thousand? I guess I didn't read that. All right, is there any other business to come before the board? With that, let's entertain a motion.
Second.
All right. We're done. Thank you, Michael.
How much ice cream did you get last?